I don't know why. You know what, I might pause, what's this, stop recording, pause recording.
Yeah, outside of your.
The planning board has the jurisdiction to review the land use plan. I think it would be within their purview to, you know, designate an expert or a professional consultant that they would want to review the landscape plan. So I don't know that we can usurp the planning board's role in that process by designating who would ultimately review and provide recommendations on the land use plan. But I think what, you know, Kate, if I'm hearing right, you know, kind of what, what you would like to see is someone, you know, maybe giving an opinion as to what kinds of plantings or species of trees could be planted in that buffer area. Provide, you know, you know, that would be most suitable to that area to provide, you know, the kind of screening or privacy that, that we're looking for. And something that would be, you know, fast growing to just give an opinion on the, on the plant species that would be put in that, in that buffer zone. And I think, um, you know, without actually, you know, kind of usurping the, the planning board's ability to review the site plan and retain its own professional consultant. You know, I think we could craft the condition on the um, and, and opinion from, you know, and I, I'll admit, I'm not exactly sure who the right, you know, right licensure is here, but, you know, someone who could provide a professional opinion on the most suitable tree species to plant in that buffer area to provide the screening, you know, the best screening that we can achieve in that area, given the, you know, physical constraints we're working with and, you know, taking everything into account, you know, the amount of light in that area, you know, what trees grow well, you know, in this climate and, and what the rate of growth is. I mean, is that kind of?
So just to be clear, from Stewart's perspective, we have no problem with a submission to the planning board, you know, a condition. Having the ZBA impose a condition that the planning board receives such a thing, and we also don't mind copying the ZBA at the time of submission. Just so that ZBA members can see what we've submitted and can confirm that we've complied with the condition.
Do you think, Kate, that that would, that that would be sufficient, you know, from your perspective, if they are required as a condition of our ZBA approval to provide that opinion to the planning board so they can take it into account when approving the final landscaping plan?
I really hear what you're saying, Allison. I, I just want to add another piece to that, which is not just the plantings, but the spacing and also recommendations for the size of the plantings that can go in and that will, uh, provide screening most quickly. I am, I am not in favor of only having the planning board approve that. I hear exactly what you're saying about usurping their role. On the same time, this to me is part of granting a substantial variance, and I think that the zoning boards could also be able to weigh in on it. So if there is a way to write it that both boards have to approve it, then I would be happy with that. Um, but I'm, I, I think it really needs to be a part of this.
I think this is something we brought up at the last meeting also, that we have some more, more trees or more, more plantings, uh, for that buffer.
Yeah, we, we discussed this last time, Maurice, Kate, Tess, Danny. We discussed this over and over again, and we're going on the same page again. Uh, I feel that let's, let's, let's honestly think about it and, uh, you know, honestly, this from this last meeting. Chuck did say that he would do whatever he needs to do and, uh, put more trees up. So there will be a, uh, definitely a, a nice buffer there. So everybody's going to be happy.
Yeah. Sal, from experience, you gotta get that in writing. You gotta get specific. Or sometimes it doesn't happen.
It is well within the zoning board's responsibility to add criteria and conditions.
I agree with her on that. Um, many times we've, uh, allowed fences to go up, such as, you know, not in, uh, well, we've allowed fences to go up and we've had conditions where um, we've wanted those fences screened or we've wanted screening and it really wasn't up to par with what we had expected. Um, as a matter of fact, I don't know if Lance is on, on board here tonight, but I did send him an email in regards to that with some other things we've been talking about. So I understand why Kate is kinda you know, firm in her position that.
I'm here, Maurice.
Okay, Lance, thank you. I, I'm not sure if you got my email or not, but.
I did, thank you.
Yes, because you had requested that I send you an email in regards, totally something separate. But if we could, um, I don't know if we can.
It, this is Chuck from Stewart's again.
Yeah.
I go back to, I mean, I, I weigh on Leah and, and Allison, but I think if, if a, a plan was to be approved by the zoning board, it would have had to been previously submitted. Um, and that's different than a condition of approval. So if the zoning board, which it does have the authority to ask for, um, opinions of others and things like that, or for Stewart's to provide additional information. Um, if they had done that, you know, Stewart's would have complied, but that's different than a condition of approval. Um, and I think, you know, to a certain extent, there's no time essentially to bring a plan into compliance at this point.
Well, I think, you know, this is Allison, you know, kind of thinking of it from a, a legal standpoint. You know, I do think that there is a difficulty in, you know, crafting your approval with a condition that gives you some kind of authority to approve the final landscaping plan. I do believe that that authority is vested in the, in the planning board. Um, I realize that there's been other situations where the ZBA in granting a variance has put conditions on that approval. You know, I don't know if you've had a similar situation where, you know, the variance that you are granting is part of an overall development that also has to undergo a site plan review that specifically requires, you know, submission of a, of a landscaping plan. And it kind of, you know, you have to think of, well, what happens if, you know, if you do put a condition on this and then the ZBA and the planning board ultimately don't agree with, you know, landscaping plan that's put forth and then which, which board prevails? It kind of creates a difficult situation that I think the zoning laws is crafted to avoid that kind of situation by, by giving that authority to the planning board. But I do think that we could include a condition on the approval that does require, um, you know, the planning board to be provided with the opinion of a professional as to, you know, what would be the most appropriate plantings in that buffer area touching on, you know, the things that Kate had mentioned, the size, the spacing, you know, the, um, rate of growth. You know, I think that would be a reasonable condition by the ZBA because it's, it's requiring the applicant to provide specific information and an opinion to the planning board, but it doesn't, um, take away from their ability to ultimately approve the landscaping plan.
Okay. Kate, do you have any comments on that?
Uh, I, thank you, Allison, for framing it in a way that'll work. I think it's a really important part and I, I do think that that should be, uh, an, uh, an expert, uh, whatever the appropriate certification is, um, that's, um, an outside expert.
You can say, you know, this would be a condition on the resolution to approve the variance for the 20-foot setback. The condition would be, um, that the applicant submit to the planning board the opinion of a professional who is qualified to, um, provide them with an opinion as to the best species of tree to be planted in the buffer area. In order to provide maximum screening, you know, screening effect for the adjacent residential property. And as part of that opinion, we would also ask them to opine on, you know, the proper spacing of that species and, um, take into account the rate of growth for that species.
And Allison, can we just add to that also the lot, what is the largest? Um, not of a variety, but the lar, the, uh, you know, I'm thinking about.
Like maturity?
Like what?
Like maturity, like, uh.
Yeah, that we can, that can, that can go in and, and survive. Thank you.
Allison, you look like you're thinking.
I'm, I'm taking notes. So, okay, so the, the condition on that variance, if the board members is agreeable would be, um, that the applicant provide a professional opinion, um, to the planning board, uh, by a professional who is qualified to opine on the most suitable species of tree to be planted in the buffer area, um, that can provide screening and also give its recommendations as to, that can provide screening and give its recommendations as to proper spacing of those trees and the, uh, maturity of the tree, um, that would be suitable for the location to provide the maximum amount of screening from day one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate, for, uh, for bringing that up. I think that's a, that's a great idea. To have that can be part of the variance.
And then I had the other suggestion, which is that we add a timeframe in which, um, deliveries can be made.
Chuck, I think Kate suggested, I think Kate, you tell me, was it seven AM to seven PM?
Monday through Friday, yeah.
And how does that, you know?
Yeah, the, 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 the seven AM through seven PM is, is fine. The Monday through Friday, um, I cannot commit to, um, because stores end up either A, um, if there's a need for gas or, um, they're, you know, it, it's kind of an on-demand delivery. So the time restriction's fine, but the Monday through Friday is not, it's a, you know, it's a 365 operation. So they're open on holidays and weekends and stuff like that.
Can we tighten up the hours for those, for weekends and holidays?
Can we tighten up on Saturday, limiting, uh, like no Sunday or, uh, within, say, eight and 12, eight and one on a Saturday per se?
Yeah.
And my, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to lie to you, um, and say yes, and then, you know, have it become an enforcement issue. Um, I think it should not be restricted to eight to 12. I think it should be left seven to seven, seven days a week. Um, just because I, if you think about a day that it snows and you have a seven AM scheduled gas delivery that ends up four or five hours later because of a snow or, you know, something that's unforeseen, um, I don't want, you know, some unachievable expectation. I mean, just, I'll go, you know, I, I think seven AM to seven PM is appropriate. Um, I think you should only, I mean, I think you should also include the dumpster pickup because that's probably more, more important than just the deliveries. Um, but I do think, um, I don't think that the restrictions on the weekends or further restrictions of hours are achievable.
The dumpster restriction is already a law. Well, it is in Gilderlin.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that it is in Altima.
We're in the town though.
Right, but we have separate, uh, I mean, there, there are some, uh, I'm not actually sure how that works.
The Gilderlin law would not apply to the Altima pickup.
That's right.
So I would, I would, um, I'd be willing, again, just because I don't think it's achievable and I, I don't want to create unreasonable expectations. Seven AM to seven PM deliveries and dumpsters, fine. Um, but I, I can't further restrict the weekends.
So I, you know, I think, you know, what we're hearing from the applicant is that, you know, it may not be reasonable for us to, you know, condition the deliveries, um, to exclude weekend days. And, you know, if, if, if that is due to the nature of the business and the fact that gasoline deliveries, there has to be flexibility or delivery of food products that they sell in the store, um, you know, are, we need to think about, um,
Kate, Kate, your reasoning for this is the proximity to the residents next door?
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking again about the, uh, 30-foot variance, that that's a substantial variance. It, that, um, it increases the exposure of the neighbors and that neighborhood to noise. Um, I'm to traffic and, uh, you know, the Stewart's has, you know, long hours and this would be a way, another part of mitigating that effect.
And what, you know, I mean, Chuck, what if, you know, it was something where, you know, on the weekends, you know, there couldn't be any deliveries before nine AM instead of seven AM?
Uh, I, I, I mean, I've kind of lit, you know, I think it becomes an enforcement issue. Um, and if you, you know, want to restrict it, um, that's your prerogative to do, but I, I, I think it's somewhat problematic and does create kind of a, you know, the sense of a, something that we might not be able to achieve. I can't tell the board.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can't tell the, I can't tell the board you know, I think that I've said the operation's 365 days a year. Um, and if you want to restrict the weekend to nine to seven, um, you know, I'll do my best to make sure that we comply. But I, I do think it's some of.
The board understands that, you know, its conditions have to be reasonable. And I guess, you know, what we're asking you is, you know, do you have any control over the scheduling of these deliveries, understanding that, you know, it may not be reasonable or feasible to have a two-day span where you couldn't get deliveries in. But to the extent you have some control over the timing of deliveries and you can tell your vendors that they can't, you know, make the delivery before nine AM on, on a, a weekend day. I mean, I guess that's what I'm asking. Do you?
Yeah, no, I, I can, I can certainly let it be known that there's restrictions on the delivery. Um, and that'll be the best I can do. Unfortunately, as you can imagine, I don't physically schedule all the deliveries, so I will let it be known to both internal to Stewart's and our external deliveries.
And does that apply to garbage pickup too?
Yep. Yep, we can, can control that.
Okay.
Now Chuck, do we do all this for everybody else?
What's that?
What do you, I'm sorry, do we do it for other stewards too, all these modifications? Like the seven to seven?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I, I think, I think the, the request is, um, completely appropriate. Um, and we've certainly done, um, with sensitivity to the proximity to, to neighbors and things like that. Um, so I, I think the request is completely appropriate. I just want to be honest because I don't want, you know, at, at eight thirty-five on a Saturday morning for someone to say all of a sudden there's a delivery truck there. I, that's my only concern, but we'll, we'll work through it.
Okay. And once again, Sal, the, the issue here is the proximity, the large, the 30-foot variance, I mean, 20 feet from a residence. Uh, that, that, I, I think that's what brings up the concern by Kate and Chuck agrees.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
Okay.
What about moving the dumpster too? What it didn't, didn't we discuss that at one of the meetings that when they went to planning, they would, um, request that the dumpster be moved to a different location of the lot? I, I thought, I remembered, I can't find it in my notes right now. We were talking about that.
We, um, it, it's Chuck from Stewart's. We did submit, uh, I'm sorry, Allison, if I cut you off.
No, that's fine.
Um, we did submit, uh, a plan showing the dumpster relocation to the planning board and asked for an advisory opinion. They had their meeting last night. They were, decided to not provide that opinion. So we're, one of the things we'll do when we go forward with our plan is provide the two options and basically show it where it is currently and then show it in the revised location. Um, one of the other things we're thinking about is if we, with the 11-foot fence, um, or the eight-foot fence on top of a three-foot berm or a three-foot retaining wall. Um, if we used a lower light, um, we may be able to get the light below the, the top of the fence. Um, so we're still playing with alternatives for that, but we're trying to mitigate the concern in that corner.
And if I, this is Allison, I, I participated in the planning board meeting last night. You know, Stewart's did make the request for the advisory opinion about the placement of the dumpster and, and what I heard from the planning board was that they just wanted more time to, to review the plan and consider it before they, you know, kind of gave any, um, opinion on that. So, you know, Stewart's has made the request and it'll be up to the planning board. You know, I think to consider that as it, as it really gets into looking at the details of the site plan.
Okay.
And what it, it believes would be, you know, the most appropriate. So just circling back, so I'm, I'm kind of clear on the discussion of the conditions. It sounded as though, um, you know, the, the, and the board, you know, you tell me if the board is agreeable to a condition that would require all deliveries and dumpster pickup to be limited to seven AM to seven PM on weekdays and the weekend, um, after, um, it would be from, I think, um, nine o'clock AM. I mean, is that, and then that's what we were talking about. What's the feeling of, of the board here, taking into account what Chuck had said that, um, you know, it's, it's not feasible for them to, you know, have a prohibition on any deliveries from their vendors over the two-day span of the weekend?
Well, what you're saying is you're going to put that in, the seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, and then nine AM to seven PM on Saturday.
If that's the direction and everyone's agreeable with that.
Well, I don't have a problem with you attaching that to, uh, what variance number one?
Yes, I think we're talking about variance number one.
Yeah. That's fine with me. I'm comfortable with that.
I agree.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
All right. Is there any more discussion on any of the variants one, two, or three?
I'm good, Maurice.
I mean, um, I don't, I don't know if this, this, I guess, would be the time to bring it up, but we're talking about variance one, that's a 30-foot, correct? We're still on that one, because I have them numbered differently.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. That's, that, I think, is a variance. Well, you know, the, the other two variances are pretty much, it seems to me, relying on the lot size. I mean, a lot, it's a corner lot, so you're going to need some variances for setback, the 10-foot setback. And then you're going to need a variance because of the size of the lot. I mean, any, to, to make that lot any larger, you'd have to go into the residential area more. But it, it seems to me like this variance, it doesn't have really anything to do with the size of the property or the corner of the property. It seems like it has more to do with the design of the building or the way they designed it. I mean, I know Chuck had gotten up a few times and said this doesn't fit any other way. And you know what? Yeah, it probably doesn't fit any other way. So bring back something else. I mean, at, at this point, you've been operating that store there for 40 years and you've been 43 feet away from 109 Helderburg. Um, 93 feet away from, and I keep going back to this, I know I sound repetitive, but you've been 93 feet away from, uh, 111 Helderburg. And now the only way to make this work is to move your building 73 feet closer um, to the residents there. When you've been operating a store, you know, 93 feet away from there, 43 feet away from the current place. I mean, I know we want to go with a, a different building and times have changed, but, and it just seems that, and the fact that it's a 30-foot variance, I mean, it's a 50-foot setback and you're looking for more than half. You've, you've picked up 93 feet and you want to use 73 feet. It seems like there, it seems like a meeting or two meetings ago, there should have been another design brought before us because it, it, I think we're kind of missing the boat here where we're constantly looking at the same design, trying to fit into something. And of course, if you come with that design, it's not going to fit.
The, um, the design that, well, the design, the alternatives that we provided and the, uh, written comments after the public hearing had closed, um, indicated that no other building placement could be built without either similar or, you know, relief of, uh, similar scale. So we felt this was the most appropriate in that it kept, um, all of the commercial activity to the front of the building and used the building as a, a block to the, the residential. Um, and, and that's essentially our project. I mean, I know that
Yeah.
that maybe there are design elements you would have liked to have seen, but when you go back to looking at where the curb cut is placed on Helderburg and compliance with the DOT standard, and then if you had made a building that was more of a rectangle running from Helderburg toward the creek, um, you would be dealing with a similar dumpster issue as you are today where you can't bring the dumpster in front of the building. Um, so given all of the design parameters that the code lays out, um, this we felt was the, the best option. Um, and if you also remember, our initial application had us seeking two or three other variances. Um, when the building was being evaluated as a convenience store with gas and we had the same setback, other buildings in the central business district have a 20-foot setback to the side yard. Um, so that was achievable. When the definition changed to gasoline filling station, it increased to So that was achievable. When the definition changed to gasoline filling station, it increased to that fifty feet. So part of the reason we're seeking the amount of relief we are is because of the definition, not necessarily the physical parameters of the site.
Correct. And I realize that, but it's still, it still brings the building to twenty feet away from the residential property, which it's, it's just, uh, I, I think the, the value of that property will never be the same. Once that stewards, that new store goes up twenty feet from, from that house. And, and that's my concern. That's kind of what I've thought we've done over the last several years here on the zoning board or even on the planning board is you try, I think our goal is to try and protect the residents of the village and try to mitigate everything so that all the benefit of a project doesn't go to one, one person or one project in particular and all the, the givebacks go, go to someone else, another neighbor. Um, and that's just, that's just how it seems. I realize that's, that's, that's just how I see it. It's, it just seems like there's so much being given up on the value of the house, the, you know, even the, uh, I took a ride down Seabers and Ave very slowly, a cou- like a couple of times Saturday, I think it was, I'm not sure what day it was, after the trees were cut. And I mean, that building's going to be right there, right, right in everybody's face, so to speak, from Seabers and Ave, from the rear yards of the first house on the left to the front yards of the, uh, the other two homes on the right. And of course, to say nothing of, um, Carol Rothberg's house. I even got out and measured it with a tape measure. So that, it's just an overall concern that I'm always going to have. And I was, I was just hoping some other board members could see it that way. I mean, I understand you guys are looking to put in another store there, but it just, it seems like a a lopsided benefit. And, uh, and does anybody have any comments on it?
I mean, my only comment would be that the balancing test indicated, you know, while there are some, some detriments to the neighborhood, um, the positives are outweighed by the project. The board, to my understanding, um, did not seek an expert opinion on the value of, uh, the surrounding properties. Um, so I'm unfamiliar with any expert that, that said it will. So, I mean, the balancing test seemed to indicate that the benefit, you know, is in favor of the project than, than others.
You know, this is, this is Allison, you know, just, you know, it is important that we kind of go back to what the balancing test is and, you know, as part of the balancing test, you're supposed to look at, you're supposed to balance the benefit to the applicant, if the area variance is granted, as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, welfare of the neighborhood or the community by granting the variance. So, you know, as we kind of talked about at the last meeting, you know, the applicant has the ability to put forth the project that it wants. It has the ability to define the benefit it is seeking to achieve. And stewards has, has defined that. They want a more modern, um, store. They want to have a gas island that complies with the setbacks in the code. They want an increased separation distance between the gas island and the, you know, the front of the store, the parking at the front of the store. You know, they, as the applicant, have the ability to come in with a plan that achieves those benefits. And we can't, you know, require that they come up with a different plan. We just have to use the balancing test to say, okay, does, is the benefit you're going to achieve by granting these variances, is it outweighed by some detrimental impact to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood and the community?
Right. And that's where we're going to disagree.
And that, and I think, you know, at the, the public deliberations, you know, at the last meeting, there was disagreement and everyone had their own perspective. Um, you know, but the majority of the board members, you know, did feel and did articulate the reasons why they felt that, you know, the, the balancing analysis weighed in favor of granting the variances.
Correct. Uh, I'm sorry. Does someone else want to speak? No?
I, you know, Maurice, I, I know that we talked about this in the last meeting and you, so I support what you're saying. I think that the zoning laws support a vision of the community that's articulated in the comprehensive plan. Um, that the comprehensive plan really clearly, um, values the uniqueness and character of our community, which includes, you know, the architecture, the physical space, but also I think the sense of neighborhood and community. It clearly, uh, it, uh, supports that we want businesses in our community and we do. We're actually, for a small community, pretty rich, um, in businesses. And I, I don't think, um, that it is only up to, uh, in fact, it's not up to the zoning board to make sure that businesses exist in the community. There are a number of strategies in the comprehensive plan um, that, uh, are to support businesses. Our job is to weigh the requests of the property owner against those five criteria. Um, and I agree that I think the detriment to the neighborhood is huge. I think it's, uh, much more evident since the trees have come down. And, um, I'm, uh, uh, I, I think that, um, we've been pretty articulate about that.
Well, and that's what I was wondering. I mean, is, once those trees came down, I thought someone, uh, might look at this project now and say, wow, look at what, where this is going, look at how it's opened up. It, and, and that's right, Allison. You do weigh it, you know, to the detriment of the neighborhood versus the applicant. I think we're just disagreeing on where the detriment is and I just don't understand how, uh, how, how we can't see that. Especially now after those trees have come down and, you know, I'll just go over quickly one more time, but I mean, it's, it's a large variance. It's a thirty-foot variance. Uh, that's substantial. So is there anybody else that has any more comments on that? Does anybody have any discussion, uh, in regards to, uh, the appearance? Now that the trees have been cut down, has anybody seen that at all or?
Uh, I saw it, uh, not too far from it. Uh, and we did agree that it is substantial. It is an impact. Versus what stewards is doing and we considered the building closer to Hildeberg, I mean, uh, the boulevard, in which case the light intrusion or the vision to the steward's store would be a detriment, uh, on that end. Uh, I don't know if they can reduce, you know, say, bring the building, uh, either reduction to square footage, the footprint inside and bring it back another five feet off the property. I don't know if that's going to be any advantage or disadvantage. Uh, I know they put a lot of time on this bit, but, uh, yeah, since the trees come down, it's an impact.
Do any of the board members have, have any feeling as to maybe this would create stewards as the centerpiece of the village? And not, you know, given the, given the, the scope of the project?
You know what, Maurice? I'm sorry. I just wanted to hear the rest of what Danny had to say.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he was done. I'm sorry.
No, I think he was.
No, I was just saying, you, and I think, uh, I don't have, we don't have the minutes, obviously, from this meeting, uh, but that the, uh, the impact was substantial, but opposed to the benefits to the, uh, to the applicant. And that was only one of five, uh, of the variables that we measured across, you know, to granting or not granting a variance. That was one of the biggest ones that we were all concerned about. So, you know, having said that, I, I don't know at this point or stage of the game or whatever, what they can do with the structure because the way it's, uh, articulated in the property or facing, uh, I think it's the best location so that residential doesn't have to look at the property or the, the stations, the guests, the parking. But, you know, if they reduce it, say, five feet more, whether they, you know, take it away from the circulation, uh, area movement, uh, and reduce the building size, I don't know how much of an impact that's going to afford the, the neighbor.
You know, Danny, I, I agree that, I, you know, that was, uh, that, that's one of the criteria that's really important. You know, there of the five criteria, um, particularly on this variance, though there are two, we agree that it's substantial and it's self-created. Um, and so then that leaves physical environment and, uh, as, and detriment to the neighborhood. And I think when the trees come down that you see that both of those criteria, there is a clear, it, it, there's a clear, uh, change to the physical environment detrimentally and also detriment to the neighborhood. And so to me, that's a really important piece. And these.
Well, I agree with that, Kate. Those, is there any other comments from the board on, uh, on these, this discussion?
I did see, um, the trees and admittedly it is, um, you know, jarring to look at, you know, what's happening. And I think as this project moves forward, there's going to be more of that. It's, it's going to be, oh, my gosh, look what's happening now. It's, you know, this is, this is awful. But I'm, I'm trying to look ahead to the vision that stewards has and I'm thinking that, you know, once this is done, I, I, I'm looking forward to seeing the completed project and, and, you know, the plantings. And I liked Kate's idea of putting that condition in for, you know, that expert opinion to make sure that screening is sufficient and it's, you know, going to last. I, I, I just, I think what, what's going to come of this is, is going to look really nice. And that's what I'm looking forward to when I'm looking at that. The trees coming down, it, it, it's always hard to see things like that. And yeah, I was kind of like, oh, my gosh, that looks so barren now. But I think once the store is up and, you know, we get sufficient plantings there and if we have that condition in there, I, I think it'll look nice. I, I think it'll be an improvement over what's there. That's my, my thinking.
Thank you. Thank you, Tressa. Sal, did, did you want to add any?
I'll weigh in. Yep. You know how I feel. I said my points the last meeting. Yes, the trees are, have come down. I've driven by, like you have, guys have. Um, I agree on, uh, what Kate's saying too, but, um, it's just the start. You got to see the end product. And that's what I'm looking forward to, is the end product. The finished product when it's all done. And I feel in the future, I think it's going to be great for Altamont. It's going to be great for the community. You know, like I said, new trees are going to come in, you know, everything's going to come in and place. Uh, and everybody's just got to be patient, uh, and you're going to see it, like Tess says. You're going to see more of it. You're going to see more and more and more until these stewards is, until stewards is all done and finished with the product. You just got to, I'm weighing on that. So basically, uh, I do agree what Kate's saying on the seven to seven. You know, and even the, on the weekends, maybe nine o'clock, see what Chuck can do. But other than that, um, my full opinion on it, um, is wait till the project's all done. Um, it's going to be, like I said, I, I think it's going to be great for the community, for the taxpayers of the village of Altamont. Um, and, uh, for the kids, everybody. Um, but, uh, yes, I, uh, that's all I have to say.
All right. So Sal and Tressa, you, you feel any negative impact towards one eleven Hildeberg is mitigated by the, uh, benefit to the village?
I think so. I, I think stewards has done an exceptional job with trying to work with us in mitigating all the effects that those properties are going to have. I, I'm sure it's not perfect. I don't know that there is a perfect solution to this. I think they're really stuck between a rock and a hard place with the site. And, you know, the DOT, um, regulations make it even more difficult for them to place the building, design the building, the whole nine. I think, I, I think, you know, their mitigation efforts are commendable. I think it's, it's going to be a great project when it's done. I do like the idea though, that we have that condition for the trees. That is, that is a concern. The plantings that I saw on the site plan didn't seem sufficient. So I, I, I would agree that that needs to be a little bulkier or something more substantial there, yes. But otherwise, I, I think that the mitigation efforts really diminish that detriment.
Thank you. Hey, Sal, quick question is, how does this help the tax base in the village? Sales tax?
It's going to help tremendously. And that's how I feel. I've been living in Altamont.
No, are you talking sales tax or?
Yes, sales tax. Yes, I am. It's going to help.
You do realize that's not how sales taxes distributed, right?
Yes, it is. I, 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 we can go on and on and disagree. Like I said, Maurice, you know my opinion.
I know, Sal.
You know my opinion on it and we're not going to go over and over.
No, I know you're in a hurry to, uh, make a decision here, but the sales tax generated from any place goes to the state and the state kicks it back and gives it to the county and gets distributed that way. You, the, the Altamont doesn't keep all the sales tax that gets generated within the village. But moving on from that, does any of the board members have any discussion about, I would assume you got a flurry of emails from, uh, various residents today with their concerns about this project. Is, does anyone have any comments on, uh, on any of those emails?
I'm so sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, but I'm just trying to seek some clarification for the record. Is the board considering submissions that were made after the close of the public hearing?
No, I just wanted to know if anybody had any comments on those. But we'll weigh in with that. Allison, would you like to weigh in with that before anyone?
Yes, yeah, I'm aware that, that some members of the public did send emails to, um, the, the ZBA secretary today and those were forwarded on to members of the board. Those have come in after the close of the public hearing, so I believe that those comments are part of the, you know, the record of proceedings because they did come in after the, the public comment period.
Okay. So would you prefer that I don't address any of those right now?
Um, you know, I, you know, in looking at those comments as they, as they were emailed, you know, I, I, my impression of them was that they were repetitive of comments that were made during the public hearing process and, and, um, you know, weren't, didn't, you know, include much of, of substance, but, you know, again, to the extent that they have come in after the public comment period, um, you know, I, I, I think that they, you know, they are not part of the record. Um, you know, but to the extent they're, you know, noting things that are already with, you know, within the personal information of the board members, like the trees are now gone. Um, you know, it's, we've, we've talked about that and, you know, obviously you've considered it because you've all said you've driven by and, and seen the trees being cut down. So I, you know, I think, you know, even though they aren't part of the record, we have considered the same, you know, issues that, that they raised and, and that's based on the board's own, you know, perception of the site now.
Okay, fair enough. Is there any discussion on variances two? We'll go with variance two. Which, which one do you have that as, Allison?
I'm sorry, let me see here.
All my records are on my phone and my phone is what I'm using right now, so it's a little harder for me to look back.
I'm sorry if I changed the numbering around.
No, I can just change the number on the public notice that we had sent out, so.
I believe that's under 40,000 square feet or more.
Yes, that's number two.
Number two, okay, that's number two, which I had as number three previously, but that's all right, that's all right. And I just want to give everybody a chance to go over these variances again. Is, is there any discussion on variance two from the board members?
No, we felt, well, I'm sorry, I speak for myself, that the, the lacking of say 6,000 square feet without trying to meet that and cutting more into a residential area was not anything substantial. You know, we were, if anything, tried to keep it to a minimum. So I don't have a problem with that variance, if anything.
Okay. All right. I mean, I don't really have much to say about it. Um, you know, it is what it is. And the only way, like you said Danny, is to go further in your residential neighborhood. Not really looking for comments, but is any other board members wish to comment on it? Feel free to.
I'm like you Maurice, I'm scrolling through my, the document on my phone too.
Okay.
Just skimming it again real quick.
Sure. Yeah.
I think I agree with Danny. I, I don't know that there's, that's, like you said, it is what it is.
Right.
I don't know that there's anything that could be different on that.
Thank you. Sal or Kate, did you, you wanna make a comment or, you don't have to, but.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thanks Sal.
I would just say that I think that that variance, that the fact that the lot is that small creates the need for the other variances.
For the, the next variant?
It creates the need for the variance for the 30-foot variance and the need for the, the third variance, the 94-foot variance. So it's problematic that way.
Okay. I'd disagree with that, but that's about it. What about, we'll move on to three then. Variants three, I, the setback relief required 10 feet front setback provided 104 feet requested relief is 94 feet. Do we have any, any comments on that? It's a corner lot. I think that's what, that's why that is required. It's a difficult lot.
And I think we all agreed, or mostly agreed, that is a significant one, but we couldn't, I couldn't see how anything different can be done on that one either. It's just, you said with the corner lot, it's, it's just so difficult to do anything differently there.
Yeah, it'd be difficult. And he, talking about Chuck and his clans, putting the building in any other position would have exposed the operations, say, of Stewart's to the residences. So the building where it's located mitigates that as much as possible.
Sal or Kate, you got anything on, on this one that you'd like to bring up or?
I agree with those guys. I, I feel that there's not really much you can do there with the corner there being in the situation where Stewart's is right now. And I believe that, you know, with the regulations of DOT, there's not really much you can do there.
Kate, did you wanna make a comment on this one or?
You know, I, I think with, as with other variances, there is agreement that it's substantial and it's self-created and I would also see it as causing a physical detriment in that it brings the gas pumps closer to the, the neighborhood along with that 50-foot variance. I mean, those work hand in hand together in terms of detriment. And I, you know, I understand that my colleagues on the board have a belief that in the end it will be okay. I'm not sure that it will be for the neighbors and the neighborhood that, that this store will affect and it's an irreversible change. Once it happens, there's no way to say, gee, too bad, we made a mistake.
That's correct. And I think, and no offense to the newer folks on the board, but that's something that, that comes with time. Over the years, we've seen some things maybe we would have liked to have done differently, but it does come with, with time and it comes with, you know, seeing a project after it's completed versus seeing that, seeing it on paper.
And I think that that's our job is to consider those things.
Do we have any other further discussion or comments from any, any of the board members? Allison?
Nope, you know, I will just make one quick note in looking at, looking at the resolution number on variance number three, I do see a typo where under the first factor, I say, you know, at the same time locating the new store and its proposed location 94 feet from Altamont Boulevard, that should be 104 feet. So I would just make that change in the final version. Second to last sentence says 94 feet, it should be 104 feet.
It says, "Front setback provided 104 feet, requested relief 94 feet."
Yes, and, and then under factor one, the second to last sentence, I have, you know, the new store, proposed location 94 feet from Altamont Boulevard, it should be 104 feet.
Okay.
So I would just make that change in the final draft.
Are all the board members good with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
It appears Allison, I think we go to a vote on this at this time?
Yeah, I think, you know, if, if the board members are agreeable, we can take them one at a time, starting with the resolution for variance number one, which is the 20-foot setback. You know, and just for, you know, everyone's benefit who's on the, who's at the meeting. These, these drafts were prepared based on the findings that were articulated by a majority of the board members during their public deliberations at the last CBA meeting. The ZBA then directed me to prepare draft resolutions with findings to, you know, put in writing what had been discussed at that meeting. The board members received these drafts last week. I received some feedback on them and copies of these were posted to the village website. They were made available to the public, I believe, on Friday as well. So these have been publicly available, everyone's had a chance to review them. And so if the board's done with its discussions, it can take each resolution one at a time and do a roll call vote on, on each one. But with regard to the resolution for various, variance request number one, you know, this resolution would also have the two added conditions that I think, you know, we had discussed before and I'm hearing a majority of the board wanted incorporated into this approval, to have the requirement that the applicant provide a, an opinion by a qualified professional to the, to the planning board, giving their opinion as to the best species of tree to provide, you know, the most screening at the site, taking into account the rate of growth, spacing and, and the, and the tree species. And then also that second condition, which would be to limit deliveries and dumpster pickup to 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM on weekdays and then 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM on Saturdays and Sundays.
Did you say dumpster pickup and deliveries on that one Allison?
Yes, I think that's what everyone wanted. Yes.
And as we do roll, as we do roll call, can we also add our explanation for our vote?
That's up to the, that's up to the board. You know, it'll just, the vote will be recorded, but certainly, you know, if, if the chairman's agreeable, you know, I don't see any, any problem with board members.
If, if a board member so desires to make a comment on why or why, why they voted the way they did, you're, you're certainly welcome to do that. Does someone wanna make a motion for any of these variances?
First one.
You know, we could, we could go in order. If Sal wants to make a motion to approve resolution granting various request number one with the two conditions that we discussed, would be the motion.
So Sal, you're making that motion?
Yes, I am.
Does somebody want to second that motion?
I'll second.
Tressa?
Yes.
Maurice, did you want me to do roll call? This is Ginger.
Yes Ginger, if you could.
Okay, so Maurice?
I would, I would vote against approving that.
Okay. Kate?
I am not in favor. I believe that there is a very clear detriment to the neighborhood in that it causes a need for, it goes along with the other variances, it causes a decrease in the property value of the properties in the residential neighborhood. It moves this much farther into the residential neighborhood. It's irreversible. It doesn't truly provide for a 20-foot buffer. There has not been any support from any of the neighbors in the neighborhood for this. It's substantial physically and also in terms of setting a precedent that you can purchase a property knowing that it won't meet the zoning code and still go ahead. I think it affects our sense of community and connection. It clearly has a physical effect on the neighborhood and we've already agreed that it's substantial and self-created.
Okay, thank you. Danny?
I will go on approving this course variance, even though it's a, it's a major I can't see any way around it. So at this point, I'd be in favor for that one variance.
Thank you. Tressa?
I'm in favor.
Sal?
I'm in favor.
Thank you.
So the next would be variance request number two. This is the variance for the 40,000 square foot minimum. If someone wants to make a motion to adopt the resolution with, or I'm sorry, move, move to, you know, move the resolution with findings on variance number two.
So moved?
Let's check in.
Okay, this is roll call on the second variance. Maurice?
In, in favor.
Kate?
I'm not in favor.
In favor.
Tressa?
In favor.
Sal?
In favor.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the third one would be a motion to approve the resolution granting variance request number three. This is the variance for the 104-foot setback from Altamont Boulevard.
Make that motion?
I'll second.
This is roll call on that. Maurice?
In, in favor.
Kate?
Not in favor.
Danny?
In favor.
Tressa?
In favor.
Sal?
In favor.
Thank you.
Okay, so all three resolutions carried, all three variances are granted. I will incorporate the two conditions that were approved by the planning board into the resolution and findings approving variance number one and those resolutions will be filed with the, the planning board or the ZBA secretary and village clerk as soon as possible.
I mean, I'll let Stewart know anyway, they have a year to use their variance. If they don't start their project before then or use their variance, they would have to come back before us. Is, is there any, anything else that we have here on the table for this evening?
You mentioned in the discussion that you had followed up with a letter to Mr. Moore about the properties with fences. I just wanted to clarify that, that relates to discussion that we had in December or January, I think?
Yes, I think former member Isaiah Swart and yourself and I think Danny had discussed a couple of variances that were granted and one at Lance, to follow up on them. And the request from Lance was to get an email from, from the chairman. That email did go out and Lance did confirm earlier, he, he has received the email on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question? Real quick?
Absolutely, yes.
It's, Stewart's, you said, has a year to use their variances. I know with the pandemic COVID stuff, non-essential construction is then put on hold. Is this considered essential or non-essential?
Well Stewart's is, oh go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no, it's fine. I think the maintenance to the existing facility would be deemed essential.
Yes.
But construction of a new facility would, would not.
That's my understanding of, I, I have a 124. That's my understanding of, I, I have a 124-unit apartment building going up in Albany, and we're on hold.
Yeah. So the
So how, does that, the variance, the variance timeline is what I'm wondering, Maurice?
Allison, let's refer back to you, but this is uncharted waters here, I think.
You know, I, I, I don't think it necessarily tolls that time period, and I'll say, I have to go back and look at the exact provision in the village code. You know, I, I would, you know, I would submit that, you know, if the applicant is prevented from moving forward with construction due to executive orders that are in place because of the COVID-19 response, that's certainly something that's beyond the applicant's control, and if there is the ability in the code to extend those timeframes, you know, upon, by the applicant, you know, then certainly it would be reasonable for the ZBA to grant an extension in that case, do, you know, if this is an ongoing situation that does prevent them from commencing construction, and then, you know, whatever the language, and I'm sorry, I don't know, you know, if they have to, you know, substantially, you know, if they have to commence or it has to be substantially underway, whatever the standard is, you know, if, if they've been prevented from moving forward through no fault of their own because of these executive orders that are in place, and the board has the ability to grant extensions under that term, then, then that would certainly be a a reasonable basis to grant that extension.
Chuck, did you want to comment? I thought you had something to say?
Uh, no, I, I think that we're gonna be able to comply, and if not, we will, I will certainly make sure that if I need to renew them, I'll come back.
Okay, thank you. Well, if there's nothing else, I would just like to, to take this time to let my fellow board members and the village, people that we've been working with through the years, to thank them for, for working with me and and allowing me to be on the zoning board for over 20 years. I am not going to be reappointed to the zoning board, and my term expires today, expires tonight. So that's why I didn't want to make any motions or second anything, I kind of wanted to let you guys start doing that. So that's it, 22 years or so, and this is it, it's my last meeting, and thank you very much, it's been very enjoyable, and hopefully the village residents appreciated what we did and approved of what we did over the last 20-some years, so thank you, and it, it has been enjoyable.
Thank you for your leadership, Maurice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It has been a pleasure to work with you, Maurice. I will miss your presence, on your leadership on the board, and your experience.
Thank you, Kate, I appreciate that. It, it's, it's kind of funny, I mean, I've been on various homeowner association boards, vice president treasures of stuff like that. First vice president of Law Enforcement Union, representing over 100 guys. I also negotiate contracts with the county. So I, I do a lot, and I, I kind of liked bringing some of that experience to, to the board when I could. So do we have anything else then? Is there anything else on the table? I don't think we can approve any more minutes. We won't be able to do that tonight. Is there any new business that anyone knows of that we should be talking about?
I don't know of any.
Was there a reason, was there a reason given why you weren't being reappointed?
Who was that?
Harvey.
Well, what, what, we'll just stick to our meeting. Thank you, Harvey, for the question. But if, if we have nothing else on the agenda for this evening, I'll, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Um, before you do that, yeah, I just want to say thank you. I know it was difficult, but I do think that we worked toward the best resolution possible. So thanks on behalf of Stewart's.
Okay, Chuck, thank you, I appreciate the comments.
I'll second the motion to adjourn.
Pardon me? I need a second, I just need a second, I think, to adjourn.
I second the motion to adjourn.
All right, Danny, thank you. And I don't know if the mayor wants to chime in, but we can sign off now, or Allison, should I ask you?
Wait, we have to vote on the motion.
Oh, we have to do a roll call on, uh, okay, yeah.
So Maurice, are you in?
I actually just want to stay in meeting forever.
Maurice, thank you for your leadership, it's been a pleasure as well, and so I, so here's your last chance to say in favor of adjourning this meeting.
Okay, I'll, I'm in favor of adjourning this meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Kate?
In favor.
Danny?
In favor.
Tressa?
In favor.
Sal?
In favor.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Thank you, Maurice.
Thank you, Maurice.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.